Counselor title in code, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Sorry about that. Actually, this issue is with regard to a report that probably our city attorney should make. We had committed to you to kind of review the ordinances and determine what it would take to incorporate the title counselor into the code. And Jackie's done a wonderful job in that regard and has a very simple response as far as how to make that happen. So we'll be okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
And I'm going to see if I can work technology because everybody who knows me knows this is not my strong point. But after the work session, me and my paralegal went through the ordinance to figure out how often the term council member, councilman, councilperson came up. And we have, we have the list here of all the, there's councilmember, councilman, councilmen, public member, public public member, public official. There are about a dozen places where these various terms arise. And so, I figured the simplest solution is if we look at our general provisions in our Code 1.04020, city council or city or council means the city council of the city of Casper. Now, that's what our current ordinance says. And I have a proposal to add a sentence to just this one provision. Instead of doing a publication for all of the ordinances, if we just add this sentence that says the words councilmember, public member, public official, councilperson, counselor, mayor, councilman, councilwoman, councilmen, councilwomen are all synonymous with each other and reference the members of council. That is the easiest, simplest way to resolve the issue. And so, that is my...
Now, with that said, what that mean, we are still going to use the term counselor.
Correct.
All that does is tie that in with everything else so we don't have to go rewrite every single ordinance. So, files.
Thank you. I guess I was just looking to reaffirm my understanding.
Yep.
We would have to go through the public process of amending every single ordinance in order to change that language.
Correct.
And so, so I think we just go through the process of just amending just this one.
And that covers it all?
It should.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
So, does that also mean, is it still an internal thing where we still make the decision? I mean, we just need to stay the consistency. You know what I mean? What I'm trying to say is, we're trying to, you know, codify it somehow, but still trying to keep it the same over the course of years.
And there, there is a legal, decisions made by one council are binding on future councils. That's the short answer to that.
Right, but I think what he's asking you, is there a place that we have put to clearly say it will be counselor from here on? Sir?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Attorney, I think, I think what, what could be done if council is interested in doing that, what I'm about to propose, in order to present that additional layer on top of what the city attorney is recommending, you could certainly pass a resolution that lays that out real clearly and from this point forward and henceforth, we all shall be known as counselors, you know, kind of a thing.
Right.
And, and that would require probably the next council who would want to change that to pass a similar resolution that says, well, we're going to go back to councilman and councilwoman.
The, the other option is, I think in your handbook, you could put it in there.
Go ahead, Ray.
I mean, I obviously I don't want to make this into a huge thing, a partway thing, you know, five issue here where we're dealing with this for over the course of several council meetings. But I, but I think if, you know, if we want to just stay focused in on just saying, hey, look, we're going to say this because the course of all the years I've been on here, we've said councilmember, councilman, councilwoman, you know, we've kind of got over whatever was the preferable of the mayor at the time. So, a consistency is, is nice and I just support that. And however we get there, I'm fine with it. I just don't want to make it into this big, big issue for us.
Introduction.
Yeah, exactly.
Agreed. Agreed. So, can you add something in?
I can add another line.
That'd be great.
It just says, you know, the preferences...
Before, for now, the city council's adopting the word counselor,
Right.
which is now synonymous with all of these so that we don't have to go back and blah, blah, blah.
Right.
And then, it's done.
Okay.
Cool. Everybody okay with that? Great.
All right.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Agenda review, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, I, I really don't have anything to add to this part of the pre-meeting tonight. We've got a fairly prescriptive agenda, nothing out of the routine that we haven't spent some time talking about already. So, I, I don't really have anything for that, for this part.
What I'd like to do is just throw this out there for the council. I know it came up, I think, last week or the week before when we had a speaker, might have been raised last day as mayor, talking about the parking in the parkways. So, just as a little experiment, I drove up 12th and down 13th with my wife and we counted the amount of vehicles that were parked in the parkway just on 12th and 13th between CY and McKinley. There were 15 cars, a motor home, and a boat. So, my issue with it is, everybody was so up in arms about us doing this. We finally did it and got it done. Now, we need to do something about it. There's only been seven permits sold of which one of them is mine. And I don't even live in that neighborhood anymore. So, if we're going to waste, I don't want to say waste, if we're going to use 12 weeks to finally get that done, then I think we need to get the chief involved and we need to follow through and be done with it. Whether we put warnings out and say, okay, either go get your permit or we're going to start citing you, whatever it is, we did that for a reason, to clean up those neighborhoods. And now, we have 17 total using them just on those two streets. And I'm sure there's a lot more. In fact, they're on Poplar, they're on Cedar where I was. So, I think it's, it's time to start enforcing the ordinance that we put in place and not waste all that time putting it together to turn a blind eye to it like they have for 10 years. It's my opinion. So, I don't know if anybody else has any other thoughts on it, but it's kind of where I'm at after all the time we put in. Yes, ma'am?
I do have a thought. If, if we're going to do that, which I think is perfectly reasonable and justifiable, I think we should just start with warnings because it's a big deal for us and the six people that were coming every week. But I suspect swaths of people still don't know that we talked about that for hours and hours and hours. So, it would be appropriate to let them know.
Chief, while you're here, would it be appropriate to come up with a printed thing we can put on their windshield that just says it is a city ordinance, you must have a permit to park in the parkway? You'll need to go get your permit or we're going to start handing out tickets on such and such a date. Is that a fair...
Mayor, I believe we do that already. I believe we already have that.
Okay.
We have a, we have an established practice of contacting them. If you're not in compliance, can you become compliant? We only resort to ticketing on it when we don't get any headway through those things. This, you know, I, Mayor, if I may add just an additional comment. I too have recently intentionally drove those two streets looking at it. The snow removal was an issue there. So, I, you know, as I looked at it, it negated the possibility for parking along the roadway. So, I, currently, I wasn't worried about it during the, the winter season. I intentionally went to inspect that myself, independent of your conversation tonight.
Sure.
And it occurred to me that the snow removal was, was contributing to the issues along that. So, I wasn't, I didn't drive back from that and sick my people on...
Well, and, and in truth, if they're parking on the snow, they're not dragging gravel and mud and dirt out onto the roadway anyway when they're parked in the snow. So, I, I'm totally with you on that. I get it. Anybody else have anything on agenda review? Okay, as that said, we'll adjourn and see you back outside in about 17 minutes. If that's okay with you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, be careful, by the way, I'm sure you guys got the email. Be careful about taking your phones out there. If anybody from the public says, I want to see that phone, guess what? They get to see what's in your phone. So, if you have it on the floor or in here, you're subject. And the public knows it now, apparently. So, I keep my around the table notes on my phone. So, now, I'm going to take this time and write them on paper so I don't have my phone out there. I don't want my phone out in the public. Just so you know, it was, we got an email on it, so I'm sure the public is aware. Just trying to protect you.
Thanks, everybody.
Now's the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask the following: please state your name; direct all questions and comments to the mayor and only the mayor. No personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters; these will be referred to the city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by council members. Presentations will be limited to five minutes, and the duplication of speakers will not be allowed nor will time extensions be permitted. Please note that public hearings and ordinances each have their own comment period. Please hold your comments on those items until we reach them. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to council? No one? All right, then we will move right along. Established dates of public hearing. Please read the consent agenda titles.
Established February 7, 2023 as the public hearing date for consideration of 5A-1A, amending Chapter 17.08 of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to the definition of flag lots, and 5A-1B, amending Section 17.56.030 of the Casper Municipal Code to reduce the minimum front yard setback requirement in the Park Historic Zoning District.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion two-by-minute action, established the public hearing dates just read.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Counselor Pollock. Any abstentions or nay votes? Okay, please cast your vote. Please record a vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you. I now declare the public hearing open for consideration of the Second Amendment to the current budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Yes. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Jill Johnson to J. Carter Napier dated January 11, 2023. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated January 9, 2023.
Thank you. Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report? I apologize. For goodness sakes.
It's quite all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Nice to be with you this evening. Here we are halfway through the fiscal year. It's kind of hard to believe, actually. And typical to this point in the fiscal year process, it is appropriate to consider an amendment in order to recalibrate what we thought would happen back in May of last year to what actually happened six months into the fiscal year that we have been working on planning for. As a result, we do have some changes that need to be done, primarily along the lines of bringing some revenues in with expenses that were brought forward without those associated revenues, which actually has the effect, the uncommon effect, of creating a net positive as it relates to the overall impact that this amendment would present as far as the budget is concerned. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we are hopeful that council would look upon this amendment favorably and move it forward.
It's not very usual we get to do that and have a plus side, is it?
Right.
Thank you. Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of Budget Amendment Number Two to please approach the lectern. There being no one to speak for, at this time, I would ask any individuals who wish to speak in opposition to Budget Amendment Number Two to please approach the lectern. There being no one to speak for or against Budget Amendment Two, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by resolution, amend the current budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023, Second Amendment to the original adopted budget.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Kathly, seconded by Counselor Inger Breton. Excuse me. Any discussion? Amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record a vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of an ordinance approving a zone change of the property located at 1231, 1235, and 1241 South Washington Street. Ms. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Mayor, we have exhibit number one, correspondence from Liz Becker to J. Carter Napier dated December 23, 2022. And exhibit number two, affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated January 10, 2023.
Thank you. City Manager, report?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an opportunity to consider a zone change that would facilitate some multifamily housing, particularly in an environment where housing is certainly at a premium and desperately needed. So what you have in front of you are three properties that are being rezoned for that purpose, as the clerk read. And the idea is that indeed the change to R3 would certainly accommodate the classification needed to make that type of development happen.
Thank you, sir. Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the ordinance pertaining to a zone change for a property on South Washington Street to please approach the lectern. Please state your name.
Hello. My name is Tim Sterrett, and I am the one who is applying for the zoning change, so I would be speaking in favor of it. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I'd like to speak to that, that we believe that the zoning change would be an appropriate change for the neighborhood and area. We believe that we could bring some value to the neighborhood as well as provide housing for individuals. And as far as I know, I believe that this is an appropriate use of the land. It has been vacant for over, I guess, 30 years or so. And I think there's something should be placed on it, and we're hoping that we would be able to place some duplexes on that.
Any questions for Mr. Sterrett, was it?
Yes.
Mr. Kathly?
Would these be market rate properties?
I'm sorry?
Would these be market rate properties?
Market rate? No. Well, I suppose they could be, but what we plan to do is use these for residual income, so...
No. What I meant was, they aren't... There have been several developments around where they have been primarily made for low income and they receive government subsidies. And I was wondering if that was...
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't... We hadn't thought of that.
Okay.
That's... I guess that's an option, but no, we have not thought of that.
Okay.
We have not considered that.
Good luck with your retirement income.
Any other questions for Mr. Sterrett? Counselor Gamroth?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Sterrett.
Oh, yeah. Mike Selpa? It's been a minute. I guess it stuck out to me that you said residual income. Is the intent to make them like an Airbnb or something like that, or is it more longer term?
We were thinking, well, duplexes and rentals. I have a son who has developmental disabilities, and so we planned to set that up for him. That was one of the things we wanted to do for the future. We had options, though. There were some, I guess if you could say low income, but there are some options that some people asked about the use of the properties for people with disabilities, because some of the organizations actually lease those properties. And also, we had some interest, possible interest, I should say, for traveling nurses. So that was pretty much one of the motivating factors for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that is wishing to speak in favor of the zoning change? Okay. There being no others to speak for, is there anyone that would like to speak against the ordinance pertaining to a zone change for the property on South Washington Street? Please state your name.
My name is Angela Frichay. I live directly across from these vacant lots. And I guess kind of the consensus with us is these are single-family homes all the way around, has been. I've lived there almost 30 years. I have no objection to single-family homes going across the street. Adding in these where he can go up to four-person, like apartment complexes, I don't know how exactly, one-to-four unit residentials. There's three lots there. You're talking a lot of houses, a lot of buildings into a small area in the middle of a single-family housing area. Parking right now is already an issue, so we're going to add however many people live in these units. Do they have children? Do they have children that drive? We're going to run into more issues with, you know, parking. I am totally for them building and putting something in there. I just would rather not have something that's going to house three or four families in each building. That's a lot. And, I mean, I don't really want to live directly across from multiple apartment complexes. I mean, my house sits on two huge lots, so that was one of the reasons that we bought it. It was because it had a nice, big property. Everyone around us has larger lots also. I just feel like it would be kind of an awkward eyesore in the middle of a block on top of the parking.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Mrs. Counselor Gamroth?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Angela, was it? Appreciate you showing up tonight and giving us your feedback. Curious, did you speak to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well? And if so, what was the response from them in regards to your concerns?
We were at the last meeting. And, you know, they were in a consensus that it was great that somebody was going to build something there. I think they kind of thought we didn't want anything over there. It's not that we don't want anything over there. We just are not looking to put something large on every single lot across the street. We had spoke to him after the meeting, and the gentleman said that he would be more than happy to reconsider maybe putting a couple duplexes over there. But my thought is, is if it gets rezoned, plans fall through for him, he sells it to somebody else, they can go ahead. Now they're open to build this one-to-four unit residentials on each lot. So we're kind of back to the same situation. So just concerned in that area.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, anyone else, excuse me, in the audience that would like to speak against the zoning change? Okay. There being no others to speak for, against the ordinance pertaining to a zone change for a property on South Washington Street, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change of the property located at 1231, 1235, and 1241 South Washington Street, lots 294, 295, and 290-
I think they kind of thought we didn't want anything over there. It's not that we don't want anything over there, we just are not looking to put something large on every single lot across the street. We had spoke to him after the meeting, and the gentleman said that he would be more than happy to reconsider maybe putting a couple duplexes over there. But my thought is, is if it gets rezoned, plans fall through for him, he sells it to somebody else, they can go ahead. Now they're open to build this one to four-unit residential on each lot. So we're kind of back to the same situation. So just concerned in that area.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there one else, anyone else, excuse me, in the audience that would like to speak against the zoning change? Okay. There being no others to speak for or against the ordinance pertaining to a zone change for a property on South Washington Street, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change of the property located at 1231, 1235, and 1241 South Washington Street. Lots 294, 295, and 296, Kenwood Edition, and zoning classification, from zoning classification R2, one-unit residential to R3, one to four-unit residential.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading of the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Pacheco and a second by Councilor Kathy. Discussion. I will open up the discussion and tell you that I was at the planning and zoning meeting, and I was the liaison at the time. And I know the gentleman, Mr. Sterrett, who's applying, is doing this more for his family. So I, I would like to think that I can take him at his word. He's not going to build apartment complexes there. He wants to build duplexes, one to put his son in, and the rest to make some income. One of the arguments about the traffic was, one of the folks, and I couldn't tell you who it was, was arguing about the amount of extra vehicles that it would bring to the street. But that particular person that spoke, I believe, had five or seven vehicles of their own for their own family. So I could see them not wanting anybody else coming in and taking one of their parking spots. But, you know, the truth is, our Planning and Zoning Commission does a really good job of weighing all the facts. And, and it's really hard for us oftentimes to go against what they're doing. And we also have such a dire need for, for housing right now. I'd like to think that Mr. Sterrett's going to build some, some pretty classy duplexes over there, and I don't think it's going to hurt the neighborhood. That's just one opinion. This is open for discussion, so Councilor Gamroth?
Go ahead.
You're the first one I saw.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I guess, I'm kind of stuck on this one. I totally understand Mr. Sterrett's goal to build some places of residency for folks in his family. It appears as if he has the best intentions. It's not a drastic zone change, however, to the other speaker's point. A decade or two from now, if that property ends up switching hands, the same, you know, whoever that buyer is is not beholden to whatever intentions Mr. Sterrett has. And so I guess I personally am looking for a little bit more, I don't know how unusual it is to have multi-unit residential, you know, multifamily. How strange is that? Because when I'm looking at an overhead map of the area, it does look like it's all single-family residential. And so is that unusual to rezone something like that and just have a little pocket in there? It seems like cohesiveness makes sense to me to have all of it zoned the same. But I feel a little uninformed, I guess, to make a real solid decision on this one. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Pacheco?
Thank you. A couple of things. One, I'm going to agree with the mayor about the P&amp;Z moved forward with it. I think that when P&amp;Z moves forward, that they've done their due diligence, and generally, when it gets to us, we have an opportunity to go ahead and look at that. And it takes quite a bit to overturn a P&amp;Z, having that discussion. Generally, several people coming to discuss some of those issues with the council. And so I'm going to feel comfortable with P&amp;Z moving forward with it since they did their due diligence. Second, maybe in the same vein as Councilor Gamroth, Carter, can you tell me the precedent when we have gone from R2 to R3 in the city? And maybe you can't answer that, maybe that's not the, because I don't see it as an egregious move from R2 to R3.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I appreciate that question. Indeed, there should be, it should be noted that with respect to this development and any other that may take place on these vacant properties, the zoning classification only allows for three units per plot or piece of land, if you will. And so from that standpoint, we aren't talking necessarily about, you know, some of the larger standing apartment complexes that we see around town. Without a doubt, there's two things I would say in response to your question more directly, Mr. Vice Mayor. Number one, the comprehensive land use plan does support this type of mixture, if you will, of an R2 and R3. And encourages that, particularly as we are trying to encourage infill development throughout the community as much as possible, which, which the land use plan would ostensibly be designed around. And the second comment, the point that I would make is, we do have a number of places around the community that has this type of mixture. Although certainly, as the second speaker indicated, this would be new for this neighborhood. Although I couldn't tell you for sure what existed on those three vacant properties historically, I can tell you it's not without precedent.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for.
If I may, just get a nod from you. Is there not, if I remember from the planning and zoning meeting, is there not a fourplex apartment right down on the corner? A threeplex, okay. Yeah, I knew there were, because this, and I only brought that up because you had mentioned that the map doesn't show it. But there, this is just a pretty close look at what's on, but there's actually... Okay, there is a three-place apartment right down on the corner, just so you know. So, Councilor Kathy?
The thing that I was going to mention is, if we look at the map after the overhead aerial photograph, basically, we are looking at changing something from an R2 to an R3 when the property due east of them is already zoned, general business, C2. The property to the west of them, a block down, is already designated as high-density residential, R4. So it's already in a mixed zoning neighborhood. So, you know, they could come in and build multiple down there on the R4, which they could build high-rise apartments on it. Not even just the limited scope of what our gentleman is talking about here. So to deny it, I think we're going against already the mixed zoning and what's already in the neighborhood. Just maybe not next door to one or two people.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Bond?
That was my, that was my clarification, too, is that it already, to me, looks like mixed zoning with that orange on the map is high-density residential. And so, but I do have a question about, I didn't see anything in the ordinance that, that provides for any, like, off-street parking or a certain amount of off-street parking when you do have a multifamily dwelling. The ordinance doesn't cover that, though. Is that correct? Does it address an amount of off-street parking?
Mr. Sterrett, would you mind coming, coming up and answering, because I know that question was posed to you at the planning and zoning as well. So rather than recollect, you can just give him the answer if you would.
Yes, we are required by, if we have a duplex unit, we are required to provide two parking spaces. So one, these would have, for each duplex, we'd have one, one space. With these duplexes, they're designed with a garage and, of course, the driveway. So driveway counts as one spot and the garage counts as another. But these are side-by-side garages. These are not, so you could actually have, you're required one, but you actually have two possible spaces off, off-road parking. Now, that does take the approach, though. Does take away that street parking. But, but you just get, we've just, by doing that, you actually gain two spaces.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. City Manager? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Councilor Inger Breton abstaining and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Okay, moving on, consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
7A1, authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the City of Casper and Matrona County School District concerning school resource officers. 7A2, authorizing a lease agreement with the Spuds Baseball Club LLC for use of the Mike Lansing concession stand. 7A3, authorizing amendment number one to the professional services contract with Bardy Signs Incorporated to replace an electronic digital monument sign. 7A4, authorizing submission of an application to the Wyoming State Loan and Investment Board for a grant through the local government project, ARPA Grant Funding Program for the First and Poplar Street Utility Relocation Project. 7A5, authorizing submission of an application to the Wyoming State Loan and Investment Board for a grant through the local government project, ARPA Grant Funding Program for the Poplar Street CY to Collins Utility Replacement Project. 7A6, authorizing submission of an application to the Wyoming State Loan and Investment Board for a grant through the local government project, ARPA Grant Funding Program for the Poplar Street Water Main Replacement Project. 7A7, authorizing submission of an application to the Wyoming State Loan and Investment Board for a grant through the local government project, ARPA Grant Funding Program for the City of Casper Wastewater Treatment Plant Motor Control Center Replacement Project. 7A8, authorizing submission of an application to the Wyoming State Loan and Investment Board for a grant through the local government project, ARPA Grant Funding Program for the City of Casper Wastewater Treatment Plant Secondary Concrete Rehabilitation Project. 7A9, authorizing a contract for professional services with ITC Electrical Technologies for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Transformer Replacement. 7A10, authorizing a contract for professional services with Jacobs Engineering Group Incorporated for engineering services related to Phase Two of the Sam H. Hobbs Wastewater Treatment Plant Secondary Treatment Rehabilitation. 7A11, authorizing amendment number one to the contract for professional services with Long Building Technologies Incorporated for the Ford Wyoming Center Flu Replacement.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent items just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Pollock, seconded by Councilor Inger Breton. City Manager, would you like to comment on any of these items? Okay, thank you, sir. City, any abstentions or nay votes? Okay, please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all councillors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Please read the consent minute action titles.
8A1, appointing members to the Boards of Examiners and Appeals and Contractors Licensing Board. And 8A2, approving advocacy for issues on the Wyoming Association of Municipalities 2023 Wyoming Legislative Agenda.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read. Moved by Councilor Inger Breton, seconded by Councilor Kathy. Any abstentions or nay votes?
Can I abstain from item 8A2, please?
Okay, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With Councilor Pollock's abstention noted and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, we ask councillors to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. Councilor Bond?
Nothing to bring forward, just nothing to report. I, nothing to report or to bring up, but I just wanted to say I went on a ride along today with the code enforcement people, and it's very interesting.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Council Kathy?
Went to a Joint Powers Water Board meeting earlier today. I'll let Councilor Pollock discuss that. You're welcome. But the other meeting I went to as well was the Chamber of Commerce meeting. And Visit Casper brought up the point that Wednesday, after we approved the yea vote or the go-ahead for the second sheet of ice, it showed up in Sports ETA, which I guess is a, for the insiders in the sports business, it is a national publication newsletter, and that showed up in there literally the day after we said we would go along with it. So that is a big deal. So wanted to pass that on.
Thank you, Council Kathy. Councilor Haskins?
I don't have anything yet. I go to my first council session on, the Health Department on Thursday, find out a little about Apathathon.
Very good. Thank you. Councilor Pollock?
Thank you. I have two reports, since Steve's so graciously deferred. The first, last meeting, I told you that I had an AMICO reuse agreement, Joint Powers Board report for you. Turns out that was actually only the precursor to the actual meeting that I attended the night following our council meeting. Generally speaking, the same, same update that I gave you last time regarding Three Crowns and that, some plans for that facility. Though I can report that that entity did approve moving forward with starting to get some bids, you know, moving from estimates to bids and starting to move that project down to the next, next phase. So, and then Regional Joint Powers Water Board today. I think that the main thing of interest would be similar to some of the approvals we just made here about applying for some grant funding through ARPA funds for, it's kind of like a second round for local governments. The Water Board is also applying for a couple of projects that were not funded through that first round of ARPA funding. And so we'll add those to the list of relevant grants that will go in front of the SLIB board and hopefully see some success. And I'll leave it at that.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilor Inger Breton? Microphone. Thank you.
There we go. Went to the Biker Bowl last week. It's to support veterans, so that was a long night. And then I have Drug Court tomorrow, and then the Contractors Board on Thursday, so I'll report next week on those.
Thank you. Councilor Jensen?
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Wait, what?
I know. No, I have OYD board meeting coming up, because I got assigned to that one, but that's not for, I think, a couple of weeks, so.
Very good.
So I'm excited.
Thank you. Councilor Gamroth?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. This Friday, January 20th, from 5:30 to 7:30, there's a reception at Nicolaysian Art Museum. They're welcoming their new executive director, Alison Malecznik, perhaps. So if you'd like to welcome her, 5:30 to 7:30 this Friday, they're having a welcoming reception. And then lastly, I had mentioned the camping ordinance at our, one of our last meetings, and I believe the city attorney, I believe we got several emails citing the camping ordinance, and it made me recall exactly what about that ordinance I wanted to take up. So the current ordinance prescribes what our Casper Police Department can do on public property. However, it doesn't say anything about private property, and I believe they have several examples of folks that have taken up residence and abandoned buildings. And because we're unable to track down the property owner or get in touch with them, they can essentially just continue camping on that private property, even though the officers at our police department know that they, you know, do not own the property or probably have permission to be there. And so that was specifically one of the things I wanted to evaluate in our camping ordinance, whether it would make sense to open it up to other property other than specifically public. Thank you.
Is that something you're asking me?
Yes, please. So I suppose I should frame that in a question.
I kind of, Mr. City Manager, is that something we can put on a future work session to work through?
Positively.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Pacheco?
Just a couple of things to report on. Well, I have an LGBTQ advisory meeting on, for Friday, so I'll be at that. So I'll have something to report next Tuesday. And then I'd like to see if the council would entertain the conversation about some of the issues of the turkeys that we're having some problems in our community, and having that conversation with the game and fish, and having them maybe come down and have a conversation with us. Sounds like it's been quite a problem, that it sounds like a lot of the community members are feeding them. And so wanted to see if council would have a conversation with the game and fish to find out maybe some game plans, what that might be.
Mr. City Manager, is that something we can also put on a future work session and possibly, so we could meet with the game and fish?
Mr. Mayor, that would be appropriate. And pursuant to your previous question, very much along these lines, generally, we get like a thumbs up or down if that's suitable.
Well, if you don't mind, let's go back then. Can I get a thumbs up for Mr. Gamroth's request to relook at the camping ordinance? Okay?
Thank you.
And now back to the turkeys. Can I get a thumbs up to meet with the game and fish concerning the feeding of the turkeys in the city and, and maybe setting a plan forth? Looks like you have approval on both, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a few things. This is an open invitation to all the councillor members. On February 10th, Highland Park Church will be doing the Tim Tebow Night to Shine. And that is a very special... Shine, and that is a very special evening for folks with special needs, and it is not just a City of Casper. We have folks that travel. It's the largest one of these type of events in the state of Wyoming, and they would prefer to have the mayor and the council there, which I certainly said I would be there as Friday, February 10th, from 6:00 to 9:00. They will even feed you dinner if you would come. I would need a head count in, in the event that we have a quorum, but they would very much like it if we could come to that. So, please, if you could let me know next week, I'll bring it up again at the work session, and maybe at that time, see if your calendar is clear, and if you'd be willing to do that for, for our community. I gave a, Monday, I gave the Martin Luther King proclamation at Art 321 to a very nice crowd, designating Monday as the King Day of Service, and recognizing all that Martin Luther King did for our nation, and trying to bring awareness to community service needs through that. So, that was a wonderful thing to do, and I, I very much liked it. I got, if, I think I've had at least a minimum of fifty phone calls concerning Black Hills Energy and the gas bills that everyone is receiving. Some of you may not know what I'm talking about, but if you look at your gas bill, you're gonna know. I have, I had several examples sent to me. One of them was a typical $500 gas bill that they pay for their shop, and due to the new delivery fee that they've added on, it is now an $863 bill. I also have another one, just an ordinary home person who is on a fixed income that pays $130 a month. They're now paying $185 a month due to this delivery charge. So, you may want to check your bill, but I can tell you, there's nothing the city can do to help you when it comes to this. This is something that was granted to the gas company by the Public Service Commission. It took place in September. It's probably why you're just now seeing it. I do believe they separate the CFMs out on the bill and then show the delivery fee, but they are tied together, so it does go up with usage, and I've been told that towards the end of winter, when you're not using as much gas, that delivery fee does drop down and your bill will go back down. But they are substantially higher this year than they've ever been, and that is why. So, I would urge you to reach out to the Public Service Commission down in Cheyenne, and, and that's all, about all we can do to help you. This is a private business, and the city doesn't have a lot of, a lot of, a lot of pool in that area, just so, so you know. I'd like to thank our interim city attorney, Jackie Brown, for all the work you've done for us. I know it was a very short stint, but it was wonderful, and it was great to have you. I know next Tuesday, we will have our new city attorney at the helm, Mr. Eric Nelson, but I wanted to make sure that you were acknowledged, and thank you for what you did for us as a council and for the city. So, thank you. Saturday night, at, I'm not sure what time, but at the Hilton Garden Inn, I will be in a forum concerning our anti-discrimination ordinance with the Liberty Group. So, that ought to be exciting. So, if you're into Jerry Springer, you might want to come to that. And I will definitely be joining you at the NIC on Friday. I am also a corporate member there, and, and so we give heartily to them, and it'll be nice to introduce a new, a new director, if you will, executive director, so. Okay, thank you. The next meeting of the Casper City Council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, January 24th, 2023, in the council meeting room. A regular council meeting will be held at, huh? At 6:00 PM? Oh, yeah, Tuesday, February 7th, in the council chambers. Sorry, thank you. Notice of an executive session to take place at this date, and during this meeting was given, we have matters to discuss regarding personnel litigation, potential litigation, and land acquisition. Therefore, the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, and at the conclusion of that executive session, to reconvene this regular meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment of this regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Counselor Pollock. There being a majority of members present, a motion to adjourn into an executive session having been moved and seconded. That motion requiring a two-thirds majority of the council present, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all Counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you for coming tonight.